It is 5:36 and we'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulipati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here. We have a quorum. I'll ask the, we'll go on to item two. I'll ask the city clerk to read the television announcement.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, August 3rd at 12:00 PM and Thursday, August 4th at 12:00 PM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. This meeting can also be viewed at, as I just mentioned, youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Since we're gonna have Dr. Yamamura come up in a minute, I'd ask Chancellor King if he could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then I'd ask everybody to remain standing and we'll have a brief invocation by Councilmember Gatewood.
...of America and to the Republic.
I pray for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this amazing city. Thank you for this amazing guidance that you've been giving us. I just want to say what a pleasure it is to be able to serve our city and come alongside you. We lost someone great in the community, someone that is a dear friend of mine and a dear friend of our entire community, Dennis Lamontia. Please walk alongside him as you usher him into heaven. And please make sure that his family gets the solace and the healing. And please help our city to find, only if we could be as lucky, to find someone as dedicated and as willing to give as to find him. In your name we pray.
Amen.
So with that, we'll move on to presentations and we have a proclamation for Dr. Whitney Yamamura, our outgoing president from Paulston Lake College. So I'll ask Dr. Yamamura to come to the lectern. So there's a bunch of wherestes here that we usually, our tradition in Rancho Cordova, for some reason, is to read all of these things. But we actually have more than one thing tonight that we want to do in thanking President Yamamura. So not going to read all of these things, but I will say that whereas in a continuing partnership with Dr. Yamamura and the Rancho Cordova Promise Program has expanded to include veterans of armed services, a student peer mentoring program, student success coaches, and a second year of free community college for full-time students living in Rancho Cordova. During your leadership at our school, or at your school, excuse me, and your university, hundreds of students have benefited from the partnership that we've had with your school and with our city. And I can't thank you enough for your leadership, your support, not only of our city staff, but your staff and working with us. The number of times that we've said, hey, what about this? And the answer is almost emphatically yes. So thank you for everything that you've done. And so we're going to give you this proclamation that I signed. But something that we haven't done in a very long time that I can remember is to also present you with something else, which is a key to our city.
Oh, super. Wonderful.
So we'll give you that as well. And then I think somewhere over here is gonna, okay, Maria's gonna take a picture. You're gonna enjoy this. Okay. So we want to step over here. Okay. Yes.
Cyrus, do you want to get in on that?
Yeah, come on, Terry.
Yes.
Come on, babe.
Okay, right, come on. Yeah, you'll be on my side, with the taller side. All right, congratulations, Sander.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Donald, can we comment?
Absolutely.
Before Dr. Yamamura.
Walks out the door.
Whitney.
I just wanted to be sure.
There's a talkative bunch on Zoom too, so. But Linda, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say briefly that these are such bittersweet moments for us. We always are so sad to see wonderful partners like you go on to other posts and leave the great work that you've been doing in Rancho Cordova. But we're also immensely proud and extremely pleased for you at your new posting. And we hope you have a great time and find the same partnership and hopefully the sense of fulfillment that we hope we have provided for you here in Rancho Cordova.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, and I would just say best of luck in your new role. We thank you so much for all of your dedicated and hard work and support that you've given, not only to our city, but to our region as well. David, Garrett, anybody?
I've met you at many events, especially when Donald put together the, what was our favorite, our Promise Program. It's probably the first time I met you and you've been a dedicated thing. And every time we ask for a crazy idea, I like the fact that you always step up. I'm glad the college under your tutelage was able to grow so big and honestly, you're going to be missed. And you'll miss us, so we'll see you back here in about a month. Remember, the grass is never greener on the other side. It's a little bit brown.
Thanks very much.
David?
Yeah, I would just echo my colleague's comments here. It has been a real pleasure to work with you, Whitney. You've always been very responsive. You're going to be hard to replace, I think, in that role. And as Linda said, it's hard to see people turn over, but we're happy for you in the next stage of your, of your life and what you're going to choose to, choose to pursue. And you can be really proud of the legacy you left here. And also, I just want to comment, I hope I look tall enough in that photo we just took.
Yeah, we, I think they projected the Zoom behind us for you, David, if you turned on your camera. But thank you for joining us, Chancellor King as well for joining us. I know, I know it was agendized for the proclamation, but we wanted to sneak in the key there, so. Again, we really do appreciate all of your, your support over the years and really best of luck. They're getting a great, is it a chancellor position, right? So they're getting a great chancellor in Orange County and they're very lucky.
The door is always open.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Whitney.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 5.2, introductions of new employees. And we have Alex Pie, Peel? There you go. Thank you. That is not fanatic.
Good evening. I'm Matt Thomas, Facility Services Supervisor, and I'm here to introduce Alex Pill as the new member of our staff and our events coordinator. Alex?
Good evening, everyone. As Matt mentioned, the last name is Pill. I know I married into that one, so I take it as a grain of salt.
Pill, okay. Not peel, okay. Pill, gotcha. Okay.
Silent E at the end.
I got you. Yep, look at it.
Again, married into it. Have no ground to stand on, so.
It's more your fault. You picked it.
I did. I accepted.
He was born with it, right?
I accepted the challenge, yes, so. But I am thrilled to be here. I am a citizen here in Rancho Cordova and I moved in about four years ago to Rancho Cordova and have told my family and friends how much I've always noticed how much the city has taken care of its city. So just takes great pride for me to now be a part of the city that I saw taking great care of my community and I look forward to taking care of the community as well. And Matt has brought me in to help with the events here at the community rooms and for within our team. And it is an evolving process and we're very excited to be here to support and grow our city and its needs for what they all would like to do, which is gather and have fun and meet and grow and progress along. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Alex. And the second person I'd like to introduce is actually on Zoom is Mike Mullins. Mike is our new Facilities Maintenance Tech and has been, has joined us within the last couple of months. Mike, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yeah, hi. My name is Mike Mullins. I've been there three months. I have about 15-plus years of facilities maintenance experience. I've worked for Eldorado County and the City of Modesto for 12 years. I just really enjoy working for Rancho right now. I like the fact that it's a young city, a growing city. And that's kind of what brought me here, was the chance to grow with the city and see how, you know, how everything develops. So that's just a little, little bit about my background.
Super.
Thank you very much. I'm welcome with the team.
Absolutely.
And I'll get better at reading my instructions because it's highlighted I said I should have called for Matt, not Alex. So sorry about that.
No worries.
But now I know how to pronounce your last name. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to public comment. And citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk who is sitting to my right. Do you want to make a public comment via teleconference? Please use the raise hand feature at the bottom right, at the bottom center of the screen. And I think I say this often, if you're on an Apple product, it's in the top right. If you are participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine now to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or teleconference, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Yes. The city clerk's office has received four speaker cards for those in the room. We have not received any public comment via email and at this time I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay.
So we'll start with the first speaker card that I received, Darrell Langwell. Following Darrell will be Helen Wayland Bishaw. Following Helen will be Brenda Guston. And following Brenda will be David Militzer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I've been at this podium on a number of occasions to express concerns and dismay about some of the decisions and plans of the council. So tonight, I'm here to thank the city council, the city manager, Albert Stricker and his team for the work that's been done on Ariman Drive. It was a very interesting process watching it all happen. It was messy for a while, but it is an absolute pleasure to drive down Ariman Drive now. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Considering the number of people that have complained about the process, but I like the, at least that the finished product is something that's making people happy. Good.
Yeah, thank you for that comment.
I am Helen Bishaw and I live over on Terra Grande. I'm here to talk about the permit process in the city, particularly what took place on the 41 acres. Your item 19 says that the landowner will be responsible for identifying environmental sensitive areas within the grazing site. The contractor shall ensure no animal grazing occurs in identified vicinities and sensitive areas. My big concern is the city is well aware to the fact that both Cyrus and Linda signed a conservancy agreement with the prior owners on Rod Bodre, who have similar situations in their, on that property. But yet, all the TruMark did was provide a map that identified where the trailer was going to be. No identifying the sensitive areas. So on the 21st of June, we had the running of the goats and the sheep. All 200 of them ran on Sterling Park Drive. Then they moved them to the lower portion. Then on the 22nd, we had again the running of the goats and sheep. They came up the pedestrian easement between the Rod Bodre and the Tiffany House. They ran along the front. They knocked a few things down. But in particular, when I went down there, I thought there was a fire there. Before I called the fire department, I went down and looked. The dust was so bad. The sheep and goats were running all over the place. On the 7th of July, plus in between the 7th of July and these two events, I sent three documents to the city. I requested information and I filed complaints about what was taking place. So on the 7th of July, Russell finally came out. We walked the area with Deborah Nesbit, who lives on Sterling Park Drive. He started in the orchard and I questioned Russell, by chance, do you know about the endangered elderberry beetle? He said, yeah. Well, those sheep ate the elderberry field in one area. There was no fencing up. The city needs to take responsibility and you need to revamp your plans. This thing of not having procedures in place has got to stop. Stop spending money on all these other things. Get some professionals in here to write procedures. I'm tired of finding out there is no written procedure. And I think the city needs to spend some money on improving your stuff for the community. And in particular, this particular orchard should be special interest in it. To date, nobody has been out to clean the drain that runs directly into the river that has all the sheep and goat poops in them off of Sterling Park Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a request.
Okay.
Could we ask staff to ask Helen for a copy of whatever this conservancy agreement is? Offline, please. Thank you.
Is this the one that she's claiming you signed?
This is.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Brenda. Brenda has some photos that I'm just gonna put on the camera in Zoom and try to go between the overhead as well, Persephone.
I'm Stacy. The last time, it didn't, it didn't work.
Yeah, Linda, she's gonna try it a different way this time.
I'm gonna try and go back between two screens.
So she emailed them to her or something? You're gonna try to use that? Okay.
I can't email them, but anyway, do I begin? Okay. Okay, thank you.
We can definitely get them to counsel. Having them up at the same time to where people at home and people here can see them is a little, little trickier.
Thank you. So Brenda Guston with Preserve the American River. Parcel clearances for fire prevention, as shown here, were not followed by TruMark development on their Folsom Boulevard property. The weed abatement by sheep and goats polluted the air, requiring neighborhood solar panels be cleaned, destroys the environment, the soil, habitat, and contributes to drought conditions. John Muir was alarmed at the extensive damage livestock animals caused to the delicate Sierra ecosystems, especially by the sheep, who are defined in the dictionary as hoofed locusts. In 1889, Muir took Robert Johnson, the editor of Century Magazine, to Tuolumne Meadows so he could see how sheep were damaging the land and convinced Johnson that the area could only be saved if it was incorporated into a national park. Johnson's publication of Muir's exposes sparked a bill in the US Congress that proposed creating a new federally administered park surrounding the old Yosemite Grant. Yosemite National Park became a reality one year later. What I wish the city council and regulatory agencies address is the following. How can these 350 trees be preserved rather than slowly killed over time, as shown in these photographs? How can these owners be educated to protect plant species and wildlife that occupy this land from destruction until the sequa for proposed development takes place? How can regulatory agencies educate the owners in proper weed abatement techniques that keep the property intact and provide proper fire protection? How will the city require the owners to provide sustainable living conditions for this habitat, its endangered wildlife and plant species, and protect safe public use of the easement until the sequa has begun and is completed? Behaviors such as this by an out-of-town developer and projects currently under review that grow the storage and distribution industry lack beauty, ingenuity, and charm. Their added value drives current residents away. Is that really what Rancho Cordova wants to occur? I and many other citizens prefer that our city planning department, city officials, and the newly appointed planning commissioners take a close look at how our wild and scenic American river enhances the city's economy and diversity by drawing over 8 million visitors annually because of its beauty and recreational activities. It draws people to move here and become residents of this area. What if we choose to consistently enhance this natural habitat and increase services to our residents and visitors? I think this type of planning will grow a city that all can be happy to care for and share with others that our city officials will be proud to stand for as their legacy. I would like to see these wolves in sheep's clothing stopped. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David? David Militzer?
Thank you very much. This is my first time speaking to the council, so I welcome the opportunity. And I'm a proud new resident of Rancho Cordova. And, but I have known of Rancho since living back east in the 1980s, when there were books being written about the good government vision that was underlying the development of Rancho. And so this is, this is like, this is a real opportunity and I'm proud to be here. And I, and I also want to recognize the policies and plans and regulatory structure that protects the beautiful American river and the nature and its surroundings and the neighborhoods around it. I live on Rod Bodre Road Drive, just outside the, the, the park. And I have a beautiful, beautiful experience being part of that neighborhood. However, it seems that Rancho, that we, as a city, that we are going to be making certain decisions that will determine the fate of the last piece of undeveloped, under the undeveloped American River frontage. My concern is how that decisions, that decision is being evaluated and how it will be made. I am opposed to the CASIS development on the 21 acres. I have my doubts about the rest of the proposed development of that area, but I'm most concerned about the 21 acres. And it, because it seems to violate the plans that Rancho has put into place, not to mention the environmental protections for the river that are part of policies even beyond our city. Furthermore, this development will affect the Lower Rancho River to the Sacramento River. And that will affect the Sacramento River flowing into the Bay Area and into the Pacific Ocean. So it's not just our responsibility to maintain this resource and to protect the endangered species, the grove, which I look outside my window and I see trees dying right now before there is any proposal that's been accepted. And I think something's amiss. And what I, you know, I have, I've had government experience, a great deal of government and nonprofit experience in my life. And I know that if the, the staffing people that work for the city are not working closely with the elected officials in terms of analyzing the policy bases.
Please wrap up your comments.
The policy bases that have been formulated by private interests, then there can be some real problems. So I really would like to see some caution here and some due diligence. Thank you.
Mayor Terry, those are all the speaker cards that I have and I do not see any hands currently raised in Zoom.
Let me just check one more time myself. Again, if you're in Zoom and you wanted to make a public comment, now would be your time. Not seeing any hands. We'll move on to item seven, council reports. And we'll begin with Councilmember Gatewood. So I went to a, I haven't been to one of the MAC plays. So the MAC had a play called Nonsense. And so I grew up Catholic. So for all those Catholics out there, you know, we know process and procedures down to a T. But, thank you. But they decided, they were going to poke fun at it the whole time. And so my wife saw me cringing and flinching through the whole play because they'd be like, and then the nonsense, I was like, ah, ooh. I kept looking for God to smite us, but he didn't. So I made it through the whole play. If you guys want something funny that's kind of off, it's weird because it's off the road a little bit. And it starts out like 65 nuns dying. I'm not going to spoil the rest of it, but my, my, the kids are like, so you went to see a play about 65 nuns dying? I'm like, it's a comedy. He's like, really? So I just so excited. You're not selling it very well. Look, I like, I. A bus full of, oh, and they die. Yeah, it was, look, I don't know where the joke starts, but anyways, but it was very entertaining. But I'm very excited to go see that we have things for thespians in the city to go to. That's just, it's, it's adding another little flavor. I ran into like six people. They were so excited just at the local churches we volunteer at. They were excited about coming to plays in Rancho. And they're like, that's exciting that the city's starting to go there. And they love the growth of the city and they're just seeing these kind of things put in. And I think it just gives flavor to our city, honestly. Number two, I met with the library commission. There's some exciting news on libraries for Rancho. But I will save that till I actually have something hardened and locked down. But get ready for some cool news. Thank you to whoever put the Mather HQ, whoever went to go see that, that sounded fun. And lastly, congratulations to our logistics center placed over in the old, what is that, the old Rocodyne, Airjet Rocodyne? It's good to see that area of Rancho that used to be full of energy starting to revitalize itself and go in the right location. And that was it. I just want to take a quick moment since this time. I'm hoping we can end this council session in the name of Dennis Lamentia. If you guys don't know, Dennis Lamentia is the most amazing Rancho Cordova, I always say Rancho Cordova has the best citizens, but Dennis Lamentia for, I gotta say, the last, my son's 14, so he was there before that. So probably for the last 20 to 25 years, Dennis has basically ran any, any sport for little kids that need to start up. He did the Little League. He helped save and start the football program multiple times to the Junior Lancers, Rancho Cordova Little League. He even started a Rancho Cordova Track Club. And then I know he's been a part of helping out with the softball anytime they need it. He's helped out with the Rancho Cordova Basketball Program and basically helped with David to start the RCA. And for his efforts, he got paid nothing. Nothing. This Rancho Cordova, I would say all-star or angel, was willing to give his personal time, his family's time, because he always dragged his poor son with him to do everything. He donated all this time thanklessly because he just loved helping out kids in our community. And I don't know where you replace these kind of people. It's kind of like finding a Shelley, someone willing to run an organization for 30, 20 to 30 years without being paid barely anything or nothing at all with just the excitement of being able to help Rancho Cordova grow and see it better. And my heart bleeds for the family going there, but my heart is even sadder because Dennis wanted change for the city. He wanted to find a way to integrate parks and all this stuff into the city and he didn't get a chance to actually take those next steps. And so I feel like his mission is on the rest of us to kind of finish it. Rancho Cordova needs a softball complex or baseball complex, put in the right area. And Rancho Cordova needs the right part district partners to make sure that we can go on for the next generation. the next generation. And Dennis, I hope you're happy in heaven. I know people like you that are just genuine, good people that are willing to fight the good fight up to the very end. I mean, literally, I was on the phone with him probably either that night or the night before, talking about all the good things he planned to do because he was running for Park Board. And someone willing to do that for nothing, he hasn't worked for probably 15 years because he was so diligent with his money, but he just wanted to give back to Rancho. So to lose him is to lose almost like a heart in Rancho Cordova. So I'm, one, I'm hoping that we end the meeting, and two, for all the people out there that are big Dennis Lamenta fans, I'm sorry for our loss, I'm sorry for the community's loss, and he will never be replaced, but we can always honor him. And hopefully someday I can stand on an amazing baseball field and say it's the Dennis Lamenta Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would have been Councilmember Pulapati, she's not with us tonight. Councilmember Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Garrett, for your comments about Dennis. I'll have something to say about that as well. I'm just going to let myself do a couple of things tonight. For the past nine days, I've been engaged, I think, in the Junior Olympics that were happening here in Sacramento. Lucky enough, or foolhardy enough, I guess, to qualify as an official, you know, just whole training process to be an official with USATF, and so I did that, and I was able to officiate a lot of events that were happening at those, at those Junior Olympics. But the real joy for me came from seeing so many kids who have been trained here by our own Rancho Cordova Track Club able to participate in the Junior Olympics that are being held right here. We had more than a dozen kids engaged in this from Rancho Cordova who have been involved with the Rancho Cordova Track Club, even more if you count some who are sort of kinda partners with the Track Club, even if they aren't regular attendees. But our fame is spreading a little bit, so we're getting people from Vacaville who come here, from farther down the valley who come here and, and train with us on occasion or attend a little mini meet that we may hold here. So we're having a big impact on the lives of some kids and definitely making a name for ourselves, and I'm really excited about what the future holds for, for kids in Rancho Cordova who may not have as many financial options as kids in neighboring communities do. But the more of these sorts of programs that we can put forward that enable anybody and everybody to participate, I think the, the better off we all are as a society. There was just something today in the, in the New York Times, it was a study about, they were reporting on a study, a huge study, that was looking at financial mobility and success in life, and one of the most important things for a kid is to experience people of other socioeconomic groups as a kid. In other words, not just to be locked into a narrow economic range in your life, but to cross paths with as many other types of kids and families as you can, so that you get a broader range of connections for life, viewpoints of what's possible, you get a broader grounding in, in what our great country is all about. And I can't think of a better way to do that than the community events. We, as a city sponsor, through the community council in particular, and the youth athletics that we sponsor and support and have for decades in this community, not just through the Rancho of Athletic Association, but through lots of diligent efforts, in particularly from people like Dennis Lamontia. And so I've got, this is going to be my second comment for tonight. I hope I can get through this, honestly. Dennis was a friend, and his contributions to the city are enormous. Ironically, he lived in Gold River, but his heart was for Rancho Cordova, and it has been for decades. His leadership in youth sports, I think, is unprecedented and unmatched by anyone I know of or, or any historical figure in our community. Dennis was the first guy to sign up when we founded the Rancho of Athletic Association. He was the first guy to raise his hand when something needed to be done, and the harder that something was, the more I think he relished it. He gave of himself enormously. He had that capacity because he'd been successful in business, and he sort of retired, and, and this is what he did, he started out a Little League, and he ended up, as, as my colleague just mentioned, basically running four different youth sports organizations in our community. And for that, I've, I've been referring to him as the irreplaceable man, because when the Rancho Athletics Association decided to take on the rehabilitation of the Junior Lancers, for example, it wasn't all of us on the Rancho Athletics Association who did it. It was Dennis who did probably 90% of that work, with the rest of us, you know, youth soccer and girls softball, Little League acting in support. But it was Dennis who picked up that ball and carried it. It was Dennis who fought the good fight against other agencies who were in the way of youth sports, whether it be the park district or the school district, you know, and the challenges we face in trying to get partners to work with our, our nonprofits here in Rancho Cordova. Dennis and I were, were partners, probably talking on a daily basis on, on one thing or another, and we were always, I was always amazed by what he, he could do and his vision for this community. He was so proud of Rancho Cordova and so proud of our kids and so proud of the city for what we were doing that was so unique, I think correctly in his mind, compared to other things in the region and other, other agencies we somehow had to deal with. So there are services coming up for him in a week, next week, at a cemetery, it's been widely announced on social media, and also a remembrance of his life that's going to happen here at City Hall next, a week from today at noon on August the 8th. So I encourage people to attend those and participate in those. I also encourage you to use Dennis's life, because he was taken from us too soon, to use his life as an example of what you can accomplish if you put your mind to it, not just for yourself and your own family or your friends, but for your community, because he set a mark that all of us should be aiming for in, in how we support our community and how we work together. So Dennis, we all love you, we're all going to miss you enormously, and hopefully we can all be inspired by your good works. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Linda.
Well, that's hard to follow. So my routine meetings this last couple of weeks have been regional transit and today's SBTC JPA, which David didn't tell you, but he's been so consumed with, with track and field and the Junior Olympics, that he didn't make that one. This has been a bittersweet week, as we told Dr. Yamamura, or a couple of weeks. So the sweet part of these couple of weeks, as Garrett said, we did a tour of the, the new National Guard Headquarters Building, which is really an amazing building, and I know they will be talking a lot about their, it's not platinum, I think it's gold, LEED Did the groundbreaking. Sorry, we did the groundbreaking for the logistics center on the old strategics warehouses out at Folsom and the southern extension of Hazel, which is really called Nimbus Road, but it's an opportunity to bring life and energy and financial enthusiasm back to that part of Folsom Boulevard. And then we also did a ribbon cutting for a company called Language World, which is, which runs a translation service in more languages than most of us thought existed, certainly all of the 90-some-odd languages that we've got in, in our, spoken in our local schools. And J.G. Pfister had a, had a celebration of their anniversary. So that was the sweet part. And, and, and I will add nonsense, because I saw, I was there at Nonsense, and I actually, Garrett, I had to read the, the program to figure out what it was all about, because I didn't quite get it, but then I got it, and you're right. But then the sad part is, it's not just Dennis. We have lost so many people in these last couple of weeks. It's the tall trees that Shelley is always referring to. On a personal note, I have a lovely lady that I worked with at Channel Six years ago named Mary Armstrong, who is actually a niece of Joan Didion, and she and her husband, her late husband, Tom, lived in the historic Didion House at 22nd and T Street. That's probably not T, it's probably B. We note that a very well-known and well-respected educator around here, Dr. Wayne Beckman, has lost his wife, Zella. We also want to honor Bobby Lundgren. She and her husband did a wonderful job representing Rancho Cordova in the Congress. Their home was in Gold River, and while it didn't say East Rancho Cordova, it was closest we could get to genuine representation in the Congress. And then, of course, our incomparable resident, George Wajel. And all of these people have made their mark on Rancho Cordova. None so fine as Dennis, and I agree with, I completely agree with David, that in a city known for its history of volunteerism, Dennis was absolutely one of the people at the top of that list of longtime volunteers in Rancho Cordova. We, several of us remember that when we first incorporated and we had to go to candidate school, they handed us a list of the issues that Rancho Cordova cared about most, and the top five issues were all children. Everything that had to do with our children, whether it was the school, or their sports, or their arts, or their music. It was all children, and Dennis lived that mantra, and he will be sorely missed. Thanks, Donald.
Thanks, Linda. So, hang on, I just want to make sure I got the names. I already got Dennis, I got Bobby Lundgren, I got George Wajel. Who else did I maybe miss from your comments?
Mary Armstrong.
Okay. You said somebody else's name, but then you said-
Yeah, the last name is Beckman. Dr. Beckman's wife, her first name is Zella, C.E.L.L.A.
Okay. Dennis Lamontia, Bob, Bobby Lundgren, George Wajel, Mary Armstrong, Zella Beckman.
Yes, please.
That's it? Okay. Just want to make sure I have more. Thank you. Hey, I want to go back to where my notes were here. All-star, and try not to repeat a lot of what you heard about Dennis, just to say that with two young sons that have been through Little League since they were three and a half, seeing Dennis every, seemingly every Saturday in the springtime for the last seven years. He's a great guy, and he'll be sorely missed, and I don't think he will ever be replaced, especially for the number of things. We have a lot of people that, that we can all point to and go, oh, so-and-so runs the softball, and so-and-so, that's their thing. Dennis is involved in everything. And even when his health probably didn't, you know, allow him to probably be as involved as he wanted to be, and probably as much as maybe he even, he should have been, he was still there, you know, doing the work, and even through COVID, trying to figure out how kids could have a Little League season, and a lot of other things, when the experts and a lot of other people were saying, don't do it, they were still trying to figure out a solution to make sure that kids had something to do and stay out of trouble. So, yeah, I, I was devastated to learn that news, and, and as much as we will miss him, I'm also very worried about how on earth some of these organizations that he was heavily involved with and did so much work, and what they're going to do, because ultimately, you know, we're, we're a very resilient community, and I'm sure we'll, you know, press on and people will step up, and, but it'll never be the same. And it'll take quite a while to, to replace the kind of brain trust and, and the work and the experience that, that he brought to the positions and things that he worked on. So our prayers go to him and his family and our whole community as, as we heal and, and deal with his loss. Just really briefly, I, I will say I did attend my Community Economic Development Committe National Federal Advocacy Task Force with the National League of Cities in Atlanta last week. I was only on, on the ground for about 27 hours, but it was a really great meeting. They, they finished it off with a, a joint meeting with community facilities, I believe, and I only got to stay in part of that because I had to leave to grab my flight. But fantastic conversations. One of the really interesting things that a lot of communities are dealing with that I, I'm not sure I see as much of an activity here, but in a lot of places around the country, corporate ownership of homes, especially of single-family homes that are being turned into rentals, is becoming a really huge problem in a lot of communities, especially in lower-income communities, where there were some estimates by some of the councilmembers that I was meeting with, that upwards of 60 or 70% of the homes in certain communities, especially low-income, highly diverse communities, is owned by corporations. So it's something that I think we need to keep an eye on, especially in a, in a state, and I was kind of pointing this out, and as we were just kind of trading inside baseball conversations, was California is ripe for investment in single-family rental homes, especially because of Prop 13, and then the fact that you can buy a home, it can go up exponentially in value without your property taxes going up, which is not something that happens in states that claim to be very business-friendly and tax-friendly like Texas, where if you buy a home for $300,000, it goes up to $500,000, you pay the tax rate at $500,000, which you don't in California, you get a 1.5% growth cap a year. And so it's something that, that was really talked about, one of the driving factors behind a lot of the inaffordability that we're seeing across the country. Another thing, and I'll make sure to send it to the rest of the council that I saw, was a very interesting slide, this was actually a California-centric thing, around not only what is considered a living wage in each community, but what's considered a housing wage in each community. And so basically, how much money do you need to make so that your rent is less than 30% of your income? And across California, the vast majority, less than 30% of the residents in California communities can afford the median home or the median rent in their communities. And I know I've shared this, this stat before, but we need to do, we need to figure out how to do a lot more to try to create more homeowners within our community, especially helping our renters to become homeowners, because one of the, the statistics that I've shared quite often is, the median homeowner in America has 40 times the net wealth of the median renter in America. And so if, if we're wondering where the wealth gap is in this country, or if we're wondering where inequity starts in the U.S., it starts at homeownership. And the fact that if you look at the homeownership rate of white Americans, it's about 75% of Americans are homeowners, and if you look at African-American and Latino homeowners, they're about 47%. And right there is your, is your wage gap and your wealth gap. So hopefully more to come in, in the fall, as our committee meets more often, but thank you again to the city for allowing me to be able to participate in that. The Air District did meet. We are re-upping our contract with the, with Dr. Ayala, our executive director. He's in his sixth year of his contract, and so we thought he's doing a good job, and so he's going to continue in that position as long as we can keep him. And then the last thing I'll, I'll share is Linda and I had a very productive conversation along with the city manager with Dignity Health, with their Director of Northern California Operations, and then the President for the Sacramento area, and really talking through, I think, what, what we've talked about a lot, whether it's been in, in talking about trying to land a hospital here or other just medical services in general, they seem like a very willing and eager partner to work with the city in finding solutions and finding ways that they can serve our residents and their patients and their members. And so hopefully we'll have more conversations in the future, but it was nice to reconnect now that they've had some, some significant staffing changes in the last year or so. And with that, I will move it over to item eight in the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also try not to be redundant here, but I just wanted to also take the time to acknowledge the passion and the dedication that Dennis had for this community and the work that we have been doing with him for years now on the next phase and the project for the Little League facility, and we certainly are committed to honor his legacy, and we will be bringing some concepts, some ideas that we had developed with Dennis's help to the city council for, to move that project forward and, and take it to the next level. He will be greatly missed, and as it has been said by everybody here, it's a great loss for this community. Couple other things. I also wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation to General Craig Sandman, who hosted us at the major headquarters tour. It's like Councilmember Vice Mayor Budge mentioned, it's, it's a state-of-the-art facility that has, I believe it has a zero, zero net loss energy. They basically generate the power they need entirely on their site to be able to operate, operate their facility. So we had, we had a great tour and, and they were great hosts to us during the tour. And, and just another reminder that tomorrow night is the National Night Out. Some members of staff and, and council will be out in the communities and I'm, and I and I believe some neighborhoods are hosting the National Night Out. We hope to see as many people as possible, but I just wanted to remind you that tomorrow night, Tuesday night is the night.
We will or will not be singing again. So that group that saw me last time.
You're singing?
Last time I did sing. There is some tape somewhere. I think Delisa has it, but she promised to burn it.
I plan to go wherever you're singing.
We, we have been invited to participate in the karaoke again tomorrow night. And then lastly, I just wanted to also say that I'm honored that the League of California Cities, the City Managers Department has appointed me on the Executive Committee, the statewide Executive Committee. This is a great honor for, for myself and for the, for the city and I would certainly be participating in those discussions and, and discussing policy levels at the state level. So thank you. Then that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Cyrus. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar item, or to, I'm sorry, to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Let me start by asking, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment cards and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. With that, do we have anything that we need to pull from the consent calendar? 9.7. Okay. I'd like to pull 9.4 only so that I can register an abstention. Or actually, I take that. I'm gonna register, I'm gonna, oh, no. Anything else? I've got 9.4 and 9.7 that need to be pulled. Anything else?
Okay, then I will move approval of 9.1, 2, 3, 5 and 6.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, 9.4 was the one I wanted to, so the, the, the balance of the calendar has been approved. 9.4.
I will move approval of 9.4.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
No. Item is agreed to. 9.7. Garrett, you had a question?
No, I wanted to vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, move approval of 9.7.
I have a mo, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
No.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Motion is agreed to. Moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters. Oh yeah, we do. Okay. Consistent matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a, a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. We've only got one, so does anybody want to pull that one item? And do we have any public comment on that item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for item 10.1 and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, I'll open the hearing. Any questions, comments, or need anything to be pulled from the calendar? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the resolution to declare a protest hearing and authorize the mailing of property owner ballots relating to the imposition of the annual stormwater utility fee for the Stone Creek Village project.
Linda, I love you. It's consent. You don't have to read all that. We're moving the calendar. But I got a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Motion is agreed to. Public hearing items, we have none? Yay. Okay, moving on to regular calendar items. Item 12.1, communications update fiscal year 2021, 2022. And it doesn't tell me who I'm supposed to call on, but I see our fearless director over there, so I'll point to Maria and have at it. Oh no, it does say Maria. Now, down in my second bullet. Sorry about that.
I think we're pulling up the presentation. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This is, I'm Maria Chacon-Nisted. I'm the Communications and Public Affairs Director for the city. We're happy to be here this evening to share our annual communications update. This offers you a look back at fiscal year 2021, 22 and a look ahead to our plans for 2022, 23. So before we outline what we'll be presenting this evening, I wanted to let you know that our team will be providing you with three updates this year. This evening, we're doing our annual communications update, as I mentioned, and I'm here with our communications team, which includes Ashley Downton and Danielle Hale. Our community engagement team will be providing an update in October and then we'll provide you with a legislative update in December along with our legislative advocacy partners. So this evening, we'll kick off our presentation with a video snapshot of the communications support we provided to you in fiscal year 2021, 22, as well as data we use to measure our efforts and the insights that we glean from this data. We'll provide you with an overview of the communication strategy for 22, 23, along with our goals and some of the key proactive projects that we'll be tackling.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Danielle Hale, Communications Officer. As Maria mentioned before we begin our presentation, we thought we would kick off our evening with a quick recap of fiscal year 21, 22. Enjoy. We're bringing up a video, so give us just a moment.
Good evening and Honorable Mayor and Council, Ashley Downton, Senior Communications Officer. Everything we do in communications is driven by these five communications goals. We have a combination of foundational and proactive communications. Foundational means regular and consistent communications, and you'll often hear us refer to these as a steady drumbeat of news about our city. This ranges from digital content to social media to the Friday memo. We also do proactive communications, which is basically a strategy to be proactive in telling our story to our community and beyond. Both of these ladder up to our citywide goals, your council priority issues and the needs of our residents and businesses. Something we don't list here, but that we wanted to call out is reactive communications. These are media requests and story, story responses and most of these you never see. They go on completely behind the scenes. Then our city communications are strategic. This means they are meaningful and audience-focused. And lastly, efforts are outcome-driven, measurable and insight-focused. We start with looking at what does success looks like and focus our efforts on achieving the outcome. We measure what we do and we analyze the data, both the objective and subjective data. And lastly, we then take away key learnings and make course corrections as needed. Part of communicating effectively is gathering data, analyzing the data for insights and course correcting where necessary, as mentioned. We measure virtually every aspect of our foundational communications as well as our media relations. Foundational communications are the tools we use to provide that steady drumbeat of news for our audiences, including digital newsletters, social media content, internal Facebook workplace, grapevine articles, city council and city manager support, news monitoring, website management, billboard content and lobby digital displays. We are pleased to present you with our findings from fiscal year 21, 22 in media relations, social media, digital content and websites.
Positive news stories appear in the media in a variety of categories. This chart shows how many stories were generated by the city communications team in fiscal year 21, 22 versus 2020 and 2019. There were over 82 proactive stories per month on average, a 58% increase in stories overall in fiscal year 21, 22. However, this increase is in the context of the 33% decrease we saw in 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The good news is there were over 1,140 positive stories in fiscal year 21, 22 compared to 648 in 2020. This chart illustrates the page growth across the city's social media channels with the exception of Nextdoor, which I'll talk about in a moment. We experienced a 17% average growth across these channels in fiscal year 21, 22. This, this chart shows the number of people who follow Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn and TikTok channels and those who subscribe to Nextdoor. Nextdoor changed its algorithm during the pandemic and separated agency posts like ours from the main news feed. Unless one of our posts receives a high amount of engagement, it exists in a parallel feed, which subscribers will likely not see. So while Nextdoor subscribers are plentiful, not many of them will see our posts. We use an editorial calendar to plan for each channel to ensure we're providing a broad range of content that is of interest to those who read it. Each social media channel has a slightly different audience. For example, when sharing information about a new program such as food waste recycling, we may share a video about the program on Facebook, highly visual images on Instagram and a simple headline with a link for more information on Twitter. When we analyze the most popular posts across all of our channels, content that did well across the board included stories on new businesses coming to Rancho Cordova, city project and program updates, events and groundbreakings and positive stories about the community.
In addition to the city's social media channels, we also have Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and Nextdoor pages for the Rancho Cordova Police Department. We experienced a 10% average growth across these channels in fiscal year 21, 22. This chart shows the number of people who follow our Facebook, Twitter and Instagram channels and who subscribe to Nextdoor. Our content on Facebook reaches the most people, followed by Twitter, Nextdoor and Instagram. When we analyze the most popular posts across the channels, content that did well across the board included stories on incident information, including missing persons announcements, information on proactive efforts and enforcement, PSAs from preventing catalytic converter thefts to staying safe on the river and how RCPD partners with residents and businesses. Now we are transitioning to our digital e-newsletters. Rancho Cordova News, the city's monthly e-newsletter, and Rancho Cordova Events, the city's bi-monthly events e-newsletter. Rancho Cordova News experienced an incredible 55% growth in subscribers in fiscal year 21, 22 in comparison to 22% growth in 2020. This growth can largely be attributed to a new pop-up you've probably seen that we added to the city website to request sign-ups from visitors. This also includes a print newsletter that is mailed to residents who request it. In addition, the average open rate for this newsletter was 38%, which is slightly above the industry average of 36%. Rancho Cordova Events also experienced this incredible growth of 56% in fiscal year 21, 22 in comparison to 18% growth in 2020. This also includes a print newsletter that is mailed to residents who request it. In addition, the average open rate for this newsletter was even higher at 42% in comparison to that industry standard of 36%. Now we are transitioning to our two websites. We have one for the city and one for RCPD. In fiscal year 21, 22, RCPD's website was visited around 54,000 times, a steady growth of around 10%. The spike you can see here in February was due to the arrests and the tragic homicide that occurred in our community.
On the city's website, we had more than 316,000 visits in On the city's website, we had more than three hundred and sixteen thousand visits in fiscal year 2122, a growth of almost seven percent compared to the prior year. This growth was on top of the forty-three percent growth we experienced the prior year primarily due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which truly shows how the website continues to serve as a vital resource to our community. The city launched its new website in the fall, which we showed you in February, and it is more user-friendly and efficient with the focus on providing information by target audience. The steady and continued growth can primarily be attributed to the new website and ongoing updates with new information and resources, COVID-19 information and resources, including testing and vaccine information during the case spikes in August and January, PPE distributions, and recovery grants, campaigns such as the launch of the Workforce Development Program and food waste recycling in Rancho Cordova Online, the city's one-stop system for licenses, permits, and plans. Here's a breakdown of the top ten webpages by page visits. In addition to the large amount of visitors to the COVID-19 testing page, visitors also sought out solid waste information, especially information about food waste recycling, department resources, events information, as well as new businesses and projects, which was a new page launched with the city website. Visitors also sought out licensing and permitting information, in particular using Rancho Cordova Online. The city launched Rancho Cordova Online in March 2020, and these statistics show a demand from the community for online services, which the city is continuing to grow throughout the system. When we last reported to you, we set our fiscal year 2122 goals, as you see here on this slide. We are happy to report that we have far exceeded these goals with a fifty-eight percent increase in media relations, a seventeen percent growth in followers on the city's social media channels, and a ten percent increase on RCPD channels, a fifty-five percent increase to our subscribers in our digital content, a seven percent increase in unique visitors on the city website, and ten percent on the RCPD website. In fiscal year 2223, our goal is to continue with ten percent year-over-year growth in media relations and social media, twenty percent subscriber growth for digital content, and with the pandemic turning into an endemic, we would like to maintain steady visitor growth to the website.
So the way to continue growth is to pay attention to what's going well and to learn from things that aren't going so well. So on a monthly basis, what we do is we take a look at what type of content performed and what didn't. Here's what we learned. So Facebook has the highest social channel reach, even though Nextdoor has the most subscribers. When we combine storytelling and trusted information, it results in the best engagement. And I think we can all attest to the fact that in the last two years, trust has eroded. So we're really careful to ensure that the information that the city provides is accurate and we cite it. There's been tremendous audience growth with our digital content, and in large part, that is thanks to the pop-up that we invite people to subscribe. Visual assets also play a key role in audience engagement on both social media and digital content fronts. The city's new website, as mentioned, was redesigned with intuitive searches for both residents and businesses, and we see this resonating in our weekly analytics that we analyze. Earned media, which is to say the ability to pitch and place stories with the media, took a nosedive during the pandemic, but it's rebounding and it remains a solid strategy. Awareness or education campaign structure allows us to garner more meaningful results due to the depth and breadth of the tactics that we're able to use. And finally, some say the secret is in the sauce. We believe the secret is in the strategic approach, and that is how we achieve the best outcomes for the city, our residents, and our businesses. So let's take a look at a year in review. We were very proactive this past year with projects that laddered up to five of the six citywide goals that the council has set. And here are just a few examples of those. We launched a new website as well as a celebrating diversity page. We hosted COVID-19 clinics and PPE distributions when residents and businesses could not easily access or find vaccines, KN95 masks, and test kits. We implemented a highly visual live, work, learn, play campaign that uses visual images to tell the story of why you should live, own a business, or visit Rancho Cordova. We focused on a three hundred and sixty-degree campaign for two important issues, fireworks safety and food waste recycling, to ensure that our residents had important resources at their fingertips. And as the world changes, so do our residents' point of view on issues. And so we've adapted to this by stepping up our community outreach on issues that are important to the people who work and do business here. Every year, based on our data, audience feedback, our own lens, and we zoom out of the day-to-day tactical details, and we determine the best overall strategic approach. So as we look at 2223, our strategic approach will rest on a few different things that you see here. We're going to continue with our awareness campaign model, generate understanding of the city's programs and projects. Given the trust factor, we'll continue to tell the great stories with the understanding that all of government has some trust-building to do. We'll continue building our community outreach capabilities, and on the innovative front, we'll find new ways to engage with youth, research new digital and social tools, and measure and analyze efforts as we always do. Finally, let's take a look ahead at our priorities. So we always look forward to the new challenges that each year brings, and based on the strategic approach citywide goals and the department needs, we identified seven areas with the greatest communications opportunities for this coming year. First of all, storytelling. We love to tell the stories of the amazing city projects, programs that serve our residents and businesses such as infrastructure, new programs like food waste recycling, workforce development, et cetera. Community outreach and community conversations are important ways to engage with our residents and businesses, especially on issues that are important to them. Community-focused information ensures that we're always asking ourselves what makes sense to the people that we serve. We did this with the website on a grand scale, and we do this with technical information for things like food waste recycling and other issues. We'll continue with awareness campaigns for food waste recycling, fireworks safety, live, work, learn, play, and others, and measure the long-term impact of these campaigns. For those of you who don't know, the city will be celebrating a big birthday coming up. It'll be a cause to celebrate in a big way because we will be twenty, and this theme will pull through much of what we do, especially in 2023, working hand-in-hand with our partners at the Cordova Community Council. We're always looking for ways to be more efficient, and we're currently looking at some new technology that could help us in the community outreach category. Each year, we choose a couple of projects that we call test and learns. These are opportunities for testing new ideas that we think are pretty cool. We don't know if they'll work in the long term, but we want to try them. And so this year, we'll be experimenting with the city podcast, and we'll be recruiting some youth from our city to serve on what we're calling the city's TikTok crew. Garrett, I know you want to serve on this as a way to grow the city's TikTok channel.
Dude, I'm already excited about this as podcasting, so I'll be on that strategically throughout the whole time, telling my ideas, what I think the city should go. This is great.
We're also really looking forward to his instructional video on the electric slide.
That can be seen at Night Out, depending on who provides music.
And with that, we'll take questions and discussion.
Let's start. Do we have any public comment for this item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item, and I'm looking to Zoom.
So I'll just remind folks in Zoom, if you're on the phone, hit star nine. I don't even know if we have anybody on the phone. Or please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this item. Seeing none, colleagues, any questions or comments for staff?
Great job. Again, it gets better every year. I'm excited how you're able to formulate and keep all the messaging appropriate on all the different channels, so I love that. Keep that going. Be, don't be afraid to express yourself and try new things. Love the TikTok idea. A lot of people are reaching out to that, Facebook, YouTube videos. More videos we can get, I think you'll get a bigger poll because it's really cheap to get those out to the community. So find someone to help you do the SEOs as you push those out and push those videos out. Because as you know, lie gets halfway around the world before the truth puts on its shoes. So the more good information we put out about Rancho, if anyone hates on us, they can also see the actual truth about our city. So very excited about that. Podcast should sponsor just me because I'm the most talkative ones. Though we can have some boring ones about science, and David can talk about those. Or if we want to hear about banking, Donald's all over that. Hey, I'm just saying, boring. But I like the more communication we can get. I think it's improved tremendously from when I first got here, and I think that's thanks to Maria's and you guys working together. And I can't wait to see some more creative campaigns, the better. And I would bring up the first one I've ever pitched, which was the Trash Ninja. I still think that's an amazing idea, and we should still revisit that. She knows what I'm talking about. Trash Ninja.
All right. And anyone that thinks that varrology is a boring subject in the last two and a half years wasn't paying a lot of attention.
Sure. And besides, Garrett, you may have been offended by nonsense, but you certainly weren't bored.
By what?
Look, you need to go to it. You're a good Catholic boy. You need to go see this movie. You will literally you will literally flinch through the whole entire thing. The amount of Catholic jokes that fit into an entire play, like
I tend to flinch around nuns anyways, but that's just part of my upbringing. And the way I acted when I was younger. Any other questions or comments for staff?
Yeah.
I do have a comment for Maria.
Okay, David, go ahead. Go ahead. Thanks, Linda. Go ahead, David.
Maria, you brought us really great data, as always. You know, I love seeing that. I love the way we approach communication strategy in Rancho Cordova versus what I see in other public agencies in our region. But I'm wondering, is there a metric we can compare ourselves against? You know, so we see the different channels, we see upticks in our engagement across various channels and modalities. Is there something we can compare against so we sort of know? For example, you know, if Sack County shared their sort of information publicly, it'd be nice to be able to show how we're like beating the heck out of them with regard to communication, which is what I would expect. It'd be nice to see. Is there something we can compare against?
We don't typically compare ourselves with the other agencies. We don't have a metric that we can put in place for that. We've primarily been comparing ourselves year-over-year with besting ourselves. One thing that we've changed this year, something we're doing differently, which we didn't really mention, is we are putting ourselves out there and applying for some awards. And so I wanted to congratulate our team, especially Ashley, who is the owner of this. And we just recently found out that we won a Capio Award for the fireworks safety campaign. So that is one way that we can, I think, differentiate ourselves from others and their communications efforts. And so that's something that Cyrus has asked us to do, and so we are moving forward with that this year.
Are there questions for staff? Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, and David, I understand your point, but quite frankly, other, at least maybe two other jurisdictions or three other jurisdictions within Sacramento County have different media partners than we have. And so I really personally believe in the validity of our communications staff simply trying to do a better job year after year after year. And I am continually floored with the strategic wisdom with which our communications department operates. We've never had this before. And Maria and her team have brought a completely different process, procedure, level of oh, I don't even, I don't know what to call it, that they've brought that is completely different than we've ever had before. The only question I have, Maria, I think we all continue to get flummoxed by the fact that it seems like at this point, over fifty percent of the communications that we get on Nextdoor come from Fair Oaks, Natomas, whatever. They are not Rancho Cordova oriented. And you had mentioned that you thought you had found a platform that we could implement, that our neighbors could really just focus here in Rancho Cordova. Even if it's the whole city, it doesn't matter, just as long as it's our city and not Carmichael or South Sacramento.
Yes, you raise a good point, and I think Danielle explained some of the challenges that we face with Nextdoor. They've got an incredible number of subscribers, over twenty-two thousand, that we could potentially reach. But because of the new algorithm, agency posts are relegated to a parallel, basically news stream. And unless they're engaged with at an incredible level, they don't move over into the main news stream. And so many times we will post there, and no one will engage with these posts because they don't see them because of the algorithm. So in some ways, it's just a wasted channel. So as you mentioned, we are looking into, and we mentioned it in our presentation, some new technology. It's two digital platforms that we're looking at that would host information about projects in a more comprehensive manner so that our residents can see sort of the full depth and breadth of things, you know, like Mills Crossing, like some of these big projects that span years. And this would allow them to, you know, get information, not just in the moment, but over a period of time, and then see where a project is going. So that's what we're looking into, and hopefully we can find a really good solution that will serve residents in a better way than what Nextdoor does.
So let me ask a really, maybe it's a naive question, but suppose I am somebody who is as impatient as I am with getting posts from all over the county or the region. And I wanted to turn that off. It strikes me that maybe the only thing we could do is exit out of Nextdoor and then sign back in again and only select local neighborhoods if they offer you that opportunity.
Linda, they do. They do, and I'm looking at mine. And I only have, like, I could name them, but it's Capital Village, Cypress, Eagles Nest, Kavala, Mather, Somerset, South Sunrise, Stone Ridge, and Sunridge Park are the only ones I get at the moment. I think I even
Well, that's what it started off to be.
I don't get posts from actually some parts of the north area. I don't think I've come in. I don't think I actually chose these myself, but I don't see stuff from Natomas or anything else like that ever.
Well, that's seriously, that's what it started off to be. And if you signed in on Stone Creek or Capital Village, you only got four. And yes, there've been a couple added because we have more nuanced neighborhoods east of Sunrise now. But over the last two years, all these other things have been migrated into our Nextdoor.
If you go to your profile and go to following neighborhoods, there's a list of which ones you're in. You should check and see. I bet you you've got more in there than you want.
So what Nextdoor does is, in addition to the neighborhoods that you choose to get information from, it does cast a wider net for information. So say, for example, if you live in Stone Creek, which I do, I get information from Mather, from Rosemont, from Carmichael, from a much wider range of an area than, you know, what I've signed up for. And I know what you mean, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Budge, when you say that some of the headlines are very misleading. So you think, you know, it's always some very sensational headline, like, you know, my house was, you know, my door was kicked in or something like that. You look at it, and it's nowhere near where you live. It has nothing to do with your neighborhood. But unless you click on that, you know, that post, you don't know that. And so, yeah, it's very misleading.
Thank you, Maria. Yeah, Donald, I don't know how it happens, but it just evolved.
I don't know how I have ten neighborhoods on there. I think I had like two when I started.
We did. We had four, four basic ones.
Yeah. And when you signed into this, remember, if you delete it, like, to get into Nextdoor, you had to have somebody send you a postcard with a code on it, say what neighborhood you lived in. Because I think when I started, I was in Lincoln say what neighborhood you lived in. Cause I think when I started, I was in Lincoln Village, or at least I was in Sun River at the time. And then I had to get another postcard each time I moved to add those. Yet now I'm in like 10 neighborhoods that I never lived in. So I don't even know how they, how they put them in there, but I know, I don't see stuff from Natomas or, or some of the other things that you were mentioning.
Yeah, Maria and I do.
Weird. Other questions for staff? Hearing none. Thank you very much. I know we've had you on the, we were mentioning this before. We've had you on the agenda a few times and we've bumped you late at night. And so thank you for your patience and keeping this information so that we can finally get to it. Um, and I'm glad that we started Gia before seven o'clock finally for once. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, team. I just want, I just wanted to make, uh, just, uh, uh, repeat one of some of the comments that have been made. Um, uh, our communication team has elevated the game. Uh, we talk and work together very closely on, on improving the way we communicate with our community and, and on issues. So I appreciate the work that your team has done. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to item 12.2, and it's receive a report on gateway signage program and discussion, and I'm turning it over to Darcy. There she is.
Very excited to hear about Gatewood Sign and, and.
Gateway signage.
It's all right. Gatewood signage is amazing.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, members of the council. Darcy Glar with the Planning Department. I'm going to let my colleagues to my right introduce themselves, and then we'll get kicked off with this presentation.
Good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Norton with the Economic Development Department.
Good evening, everyone. Laura Fickle with Economic Development Department.
So the purpose of tonight's meeting is we're going to give a brief overview of gateway signage. I think, um, most council are familiar with our gateway signs. We had a, some work session discussions back in 2019. Um, we're going to discuss a little bit about what the current zoning code regulations are. Um, how do we lead to any future gateway signs? And that's in the form of a, a council adopted resolution. Um, look at some regional examples. Um, and then on the line this evening on Zoom, we have representatives from a national retailer as well as a signage company. And they're going to go over some proposed signage for a specific location, and then we're going to discuss some next steps. Uh, so a little bit of background, um, like I said, staff has received an inquiry about constructing one of these, uh, freeway pylon gateway signs at a specific location here within the city. Um, this national retailer, um, this is a request as part of their conditions of site selection. So that's part of the reason we're having this discussion tonight. Um, additionally, um, we will talk about some previous gateway signage discussions, like I just mentioned. So, um, we're going to show some examples of different types of signs that we have throughout the city in the next few slides. Um, previously, when we had discussed this, um, the city doesn't have any of these larger identification pylon signs, um, when you're entering through the city. So that can be a deterrent for retailers or other corporations coming to the city. Um, so additionally, one of the things if council is interested at some point in time in moving forward with a gateway sign is that the code calls for a specific resolution be established um, for securing sites, designing the sign, maintenance, leasing. Um, so those are all aspects that would need to be done for, for future signage. So just to, to kind of clarify, we have a few different signs throughout the city. Some of these terms have been interchangeable, so we just wanted to clarify the different types of signs. So we have our city gateway monument signage. Um, you will see these upon, um, entry into the city such as, um, entrance in, from heading east on Folsom as well as heading south on Sunrise. Those are the images on the left side of your screen. Um, the next one would be community identification signage. So we're getting a lot of interest from neighborhood communities wanting to identify themselves. So the representation you see on the screen from Lincoln Village, this is one of those neighborhood community identification signs. Next, we have a, a typical retail sign. So this is our typical monument signage. This is, um, only advertising those uses that are on a, a specific parcel. Uh, lastly, we have digital billboards, um, and we do have a few of those within the city. And those are allowed within a specific geographic region. What you didn't see is an example of an existing gateway sign because we do not have any of those currently within the city.
And as it currently stands, um, there are very few signs that will alert anyone driving through town that you are actually in the city of Rancho Cordova. There are only two existing signs on Highway 50 heading both eastbound and westbound directions. One that says Rancho Cordova, the next five exits, followed by the city of Rancho Cordova sign listing our population and elevation. Um, there is no way that these signs communicate our identity or what you might find if you actually got off the freeway, any one of our exits. Um, there are a few signs, as you'll see on the right, that are, uh, you can see from the freeway, two of which are not even within the city boundaries, but these are more monument in nature. So usually they do, they just list the existing businesses. They're located right there on that particular parcel. And as mentioned previously, there's, signage is always really important to retail establishments and has historically been so. But and sometimes just seeing a sign as you're driving home, you're like, oh, crap, I forgot I had to do that. And you'll like get off the freeway, go run your errand on whatever the sign indicated, even though it wasn't on your to-do list for that day. But the trend that we've been seeing most recently is that there are now other types of businesses that also want to promote that they are located within the city of Rancho Cordova. As the largest master plan office, um, park in the region, we are home to various entities that are proud to call us home. And yet currently they can only have signage on their buildings. Many businesses have required to have, um, highway visible signage in addition to that signage on their building. And now highway visible signage now contributes, like contributes to a traditional office user making a decision on whether or not they will locate within your city. This has previously not been a requirement, but now we've been seeing more and more cases where this is a requirement. And not only does signage help you find what businesses are located there, what retail is located there, but it also helps the community, the businesses and the consumers have a sense of place about a location.
I'm going to just briefly walk through the zoning code. We're not going to read this word by word. Um, but the, the zoning code already has a gateway signage program and the criteria is in there. Um, they are to be placed at key entrances into the city to promote businesses, activities, events, or places of community um, at that specific, um, off-ramp location. There's a couple of criteria, so they should be, or they have to be located within the city limits, and they could be on Caltrans right-of-way. Um, so within city limits doesn't mean, uh, public property. It could be on a private property. Um, as I mentioned earlier, these signs, um, in terms of design, maintenance, construction, leasing, et cetera, are done via a resolution. So, um, while the code language doesn't specifically state that council could do one resolution for, for, to cover all gateway signs within the city, it would actually behoove the council to do a resolution for each sign as it were to come in in the future. Um, the reason being is that each location is going to have its own challenges. So it could be geographic, it could be, um, you want to establish certain conditions of approval or, uh, retail boundaries that are specific, um, to that specific sign. So, um, rather than trying to create a, a resolution that would capture any and all gateway signs, it would be done on a case-by-case basis. There are already standards within the code. These are pylon signs with a maximum height of 60 feet, 1,000 square feet, um, for signage area. We have, um, in some inquiries that we've seen, um, people requesting above 60 feet based on kind of just the topography and needing some additional height. Um, so that is something that if council chose to, you could build something in the code that through the design review process, maybe they could exceed that height. We're not asking for, um, any answers tonight in terms of what that looks like. We just want to kind of walk through and get your feedback. Um, additionally, no more than one sign could be located at a freeway off-ramp. Um, they have to, or they should not have to. It says they should include some sort of city logo or identification um, through text or an iconic signage. So as you saw in some of those commu- community gateway signs, there's a tree or a river or something that's iconic to that specific area to where they're located. They also have to adhere to all other development standards for our signs such as illumination. We're going to walk through just some examples. There's a lot of different examples of what a gateway sign could look like. So we took some within the region for council to kind of look at and consider for future sign design. So these on the map before you probably have seen within Folsom, one at 80 and one at 55. Uh, El Dorado Hills, we have, um, a sign here that's at 80 feet tall. Another regional example is in Elk Grove. So these signs, a lot of these are probably familiar to you as you've driven by them a few times. Um, you can see on this one, they obviously have an elk at the top symbolizing Elk Grove. And some of the previous ones, you just saw an indication of the city that it's located in. Another regional example, which is fairly new, is Delta Shores. Um, they have three different signs along their freeway. Um, I'm not sure what their actual separation is between all three, but they are 75 feet tall. Here's another sign, um, in Yuba, and this one is 60 feet tall. And then lastly, um, this is a newer one on northbound I-5 at Natomas, um, which has just some variation of uh, size and scale and tenant signage ability. So this first location is actually the location, um, and the conversation that is driven by a potential national retailer. Um, so I'm going to give a little bit of just background on this, and then we're going to turn it over to the, um, sign and retailer to kind of go through their renderings. They're not looking for council to give any kind of an approval. They just want to give you an idea of what these signs could potentially look like. Um, they are proposing to design, fund, construct, uh, maintain, lease, um, this particular sign, it would be on private property. So they are offering to take over that entire effort versus it being on public property. So this location is at Highway 50 and Sunrise. Folsom is at the bottom of your screen. This national retailer who's interested in going in one of these leasing spaces is looking for this particular sign to be located here. Um, if council were to give any sort of indication about moving forward, this would have to go through a designer view process. Um, additionally, it requires that resolution where you can have standard conditions in there. Maybe identify a specific retail district where it, it identifies those users that could potentially go on this sign. Um, there's other monument operation maintenance costs that could be built into a particular resolution. And with that, we're going to turn it over to the retailer and sign group to kind of go over their renderings. It should be, um, I believe Solomon should be on the line from the, now, he's representative of the national retailer to go over his renderings. Persephone is pulling those up right now.
There I am. I apologize for being informal tonight. Um, you all look really great. Uh, let's see. So I, I, I'll, I'll share, I'll share. If it's okay, I'll share my screen. I have the, I have the rendering here. Oh, is that okay if I share my screen?
We actually have the renderings up on our screen if we can just flip to the next slide.
Um, okay, that's fine. So you could leave it there. So, um, just by way of background, I represent a national retailer. And, um, and we're working with, uh, Brian Quarte, who's on the call, as well as Craig Yesen from, um, from the, the sign company that my client works with. And, um, we've been noodling through a deal to take the former Arizona tile space. And, um, when we went for approval from my client, the, uh, the president of the company, it's a large $6 billion company, uh, said, I'll go, but only if we can get a freeway sign. So, um, I've been dialog- I've been dialoguing with Laura on how to, how to, um, you know, get more retail into Rancho Cordova, and I presented her with this, um, I don't know, opportunity. And she said, well, there is a program to, uh, to build a freeway sign, and this is what it looks like. But I don't know how we can make something like that happen in the kind of timing that you're looking to make it happen in. And I said, well, what if we design it, build it, pay for it, effectively lease it, we'll have to find tenants to go on the sign and pay their share, maintain it, charge the pass-throughs, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll do it with whatever strings you require. So we'll engage on a resolution and we'll iron out all the kinks and make sure that the city checks all its boxes and move forward on that basis. And, uh, the, and, and so the idea was spawned. So I got with my client and, um, they engage their national sign vendor that they do millions of dollars of business with a year. And they're actually paying them to come up with, to come up with some designs, with some ideas. So we had a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago onsite with staff. And we talked and, and with the vendor and with the landlord representative, Brian. And we talked through the code, the sign, what it looks like at night, the glow, how it will affect neighbors across the street, how, how, um, you know, what's it going to look like at 60 feet? Where's the optimal spot to put it? What angle to put it at? And we kind of went, we sort of noodled through all that stuff. And the goal was to come up with something to show you tonight to see if we're going in the right direction and to see what feedback we can get from you so that we can, um, you know, sort of go to a next step. So, so with that, I think, um, maybe quickly take any questions. Otherwise, we could just sort of go through what, what Craig prepared and, um, I'll, I'll let, I think it'll be best to have Craig sort of talk through the slides as we go through them. So are there any questions? Did I set that up? Okay. Great. Okay. So Craig, why don't you take over and tell them when to change slides?
Hi, everybody. So, um, basically this is just a real beginning, uh, design, you know, um, ideally, the only thing I can really point out at this point with this design is the fact that the Rancho Cordova logo is, it looks more of a permanent fixture than an actual tenant panel. And the fact that the illumination of the sign is only the lettering or logos, it is not the backgrounds. So it makes it a lot less intrusive on residential and, you know, drivers on the freeway at night. So they're not just blinded by this big bright sign. Um, other than that, um, if there's any questions, technical.
Maybe show the, uh, the freeway perspectives.
Yeah, I would just remind presenters that I'll go ahead and ask questions. Excuse me. I'll go ahead and ask for questions. Let's just keep the staff presentation and we'll take questions at the end.
Great.
So as you can see, you can, if you want to thumb through the, the, the couple of different perspectives that we have, it's very difficult to get pictures of that area, um, due to the overpass on Sunrise and, you know, the traffic, the heavy traffic on, uh, 50.
So Donald, we do need to ask questions about this project.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda. I was just making sure that they under, that presenters understood that they don't ask for questions that we do. Go ahead.
Sure. Um, so you're proposing 60 feet tall.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. And the, um, uh, the illumination is on the tenants. And it's obviously that there's not that number of tenants in the area. So how would you develop a criteria? Or would you expect the city to develop a criteria uh, for who would be on the sign?
So I, I can address that. Um, so I think it's, so, so the, so the way the sign will get paid for is mostly from the top four or, yeah, the, the top four tenants. And w- we already have those tenants in mind. Um, one is, one is the tenant that would be taking Arizona tile. Another one is a, uh, is a, a huge, um, home improvement store that's right there on Sunrise. Another one is a big warehouse store. You know, on Sunrise. And we, we think, um, or so just, just with those three, we think we could, we could probably get to just about paying for the sign. And everything after that, the cri, you know, we, we sort of noodled around what the criteria would be. It would really be the city driving it. But the thought would be you'd sort of create a zone, a geographic zone. So if your business is within that zone, then you can qualify to be on the sign. And we'd figure out some kind of way to notice and then some kind of, you know, way to have a beauty contest to see who gets to be on the sign. And, you know, per whatever process, the, the city would. And, you know, per whatever process the, the city would, would, you know, like to see that be, we would be amenable.
Okay, so I, I have one question about the height. Do you feel the need to, to fly the sign to see whether you would want it to be higher?
Frankly, the, the, my client thinks that the height of the sign is fine. It, it sort of balances visibility and cost effectiveness, if I'm being honest.
All right. That, that works for me. So, um, um, so then secondly, I, I'm sorry, the, the, the print here on our screen is really very small. And I don't know where image i- is, National Signs is located. But are you all, would you all be comfortable with branding this not only as Rancho Cordova, but something that indicated that it was locational? And I ask that because the only times we've talked about these kinds of signs in a positive light has been if we could talk about, like you said, an area. Okay, you know, like our Beryl District or, but at this, at this particular location, we've talked about the Sunrise Station. So no, this particular center with its variety of tenants has never been known by a particular name. But catty corner to this is the Sunrise, Sunrise Light Rail Station. And so if we called this area Rancho Cordova, number one. Number two, the Sunrise Station, then you would have your client located at the Sunrise Station in Rancho Cordova.
But would you, like the Sunrise Station District? I mean, I guess the details don't matter, but.
Well, station, station would be the, station would be the district, not the, not the district itself. But, I mean, not the word district, but just the Sunrise Station. The way we use village or station or whatever is the current use, euphemism to talk about a new shopping center being built or rebuilt.
I, I mean, I, I think our attitude is, is this isn't going to work for us if it, if it doesn't work for you. So, you know, our goal is to figure out how to make this work for you. The, the, you know, our objective is to, is to have a sixty-foot pile-on sign with retail panels. And whatever it says on top of the sign, what the sign looks like, et cetera, that, you know, who we're allowed to put on this, who we're allowed to put on there. You know, provided that we're able to put retailers on there who could pony up the kind of dough we need to build this thing. We're super amenable, want to work with you and figure out how to check all of your boxes so that we can get a green light.
And on a personal note, I really appreciate that. Everybody knows that I am not a fan of large signs and, um, and being able to create, being able to work with you to create a destination identity would be as important to me as who you all decide to put on the sign. So I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, may, maybe staff can kind of take a deeper dive with you offline and get some definitive feedback and, and ideas going. And then we can circle back with staff.
Sure.
And with, with Craig and his design team and, and, you know, submit something closer to what you think would be best for your city.
Sure. I'm personally, I appreciate the fact that you're not trying to make a, some monumental design statement with, with the sign. This is nice and subdued. We've got some, we had some pictures of signs that are really kind of over the top. And, and around here, some of these signs have had huge problems with swallows coming to nest on the top of them. And I guess you have to get a helicopter up there to, to wash off the sign or something, but, um.
A helicopter take up every day for me there. It's all they couldn't do.
Yeah, right. But I, I, I'm sure elk is fine for elk grove, but we don't need a salmon on top of this sign.
Craig, you have ways to mitigate nesting, right?
Yeah, there's lots of solutions for bird control where they wouldn't even be visible from the ground.
I don't know. I, I'm feeling a ad hoc subcommittee coming on, but that's, that's just what I'm feeling at the moment. But if there aren't more questions for staff at the moment, is there more of a presentation to do? Okay, let's, let's try to get through the rest of it. If, if we have other questions, then, then we can stop, but.
We are near the very end, so this will be pretty close.
I, I think just to, just to, to cap it off, I think Brian maybe just say a few words about what, what ownership's objectives are, you know, with the sign and why they're willing to give, give land away for it, et cetera.
Yes, sure, absolutely. You know, there, there is this new vacancy that's going to be in the building. And you know, whenever you're trying to lease space, the first thing the large, the large retailers want to know is, is, you know, how much freeway signage? It obviously has a, a big impact and helps their business. And as was stated, you know, and, and it helps, so it helps the leaseability of the building. So selfishly, it's, it's good for ownership from that standpoint. But I think we also understand that if it can be arranged as a win-win and help the city also advertise itself and its, its, its boundaries and, and the other businesses as well, not just that are associated with our parcel and with our building. But, you know, kind of highlights some of the other things that are maybe hidden back in Rancho Cordova a little bit more and advertise the city itself, you know, up on the top. So again, we're trying to make this kind of a cost neutral event too, you know, for, for ownership and obviously for the city as well. So that's our, that's the motivation.
They'll also bring, you know, professional level of management. They, they, they manage a number of properties. They have a commercial management company that manages this property. And the, a contract would be added to that management contract to manage the sign. And money would get collected from the retailers every year to pay for maintenance and electricity, et cetera. They'll also manage the whole development process. So it takes a lot of time and expertise to, to make stuff like this happen. And they're a, a solid organization, well-heeled, sophisticated, and will, I think will do a great job.
Thank you for that. I'll go ahead and move on with the remaining portion of our presentation. So as mentioned previously in the slide, retailers not the only ones that are looking for additional signage. And with so many businesses that are located within our office park, there is interest in putting a sign somewhere along this red line. We haven't exactly narrowed it on, and that's why we are also here this evening to gauge council's interest on this. There is going to be a new pedestrian bridge on the east side of Zimvendale. So we're really looking at this stretch in between, you see on the lower left corner, the existing pedestrian bridge that is located there. So this would provide enough bandwidth as vehicles are traveling there to be able to advertise many of the businesses that are located within our business park. And I'll come up with another hearing, council member, Budge, will come up with a snazzier name than business park, but we'll just use that as the, the placeholder for this moment. And I'll have Dr. Seb on to next steps.
So with that, we'll just go over some next steps. We've heard a couple of comments tonight from council and hopefully we'll hear some more. But just a few things for council to consider during discussion is, is there anywhere within our standards that you would want any kind of potential code amendment to allow an increase in height? To be considered as part of the designer view or keep it as is? Staff isn't advocating for either one. It's just one of the items that has been brought up, so we wanted to bring that forward. Any specific items that you would want to see in a resolution? It sounds like there's some interest on key iconic identification based upon where the sign is, and we can definitely address that. And that folds into number three of any additional design criteria you'd want to see. Final approval authority right now, as is, the way that with that, the duties and authority with the planning commission and city council are set up. Any future designer view for a sign of this nature would go to the planning commission and it would stop there. So if council were to have a desire to want to see future design of these and have the final authority, we could potentially use the resolution as the mechanism for that. And with that, any additional feedback or direction from staff on gateway signs at either specific locations we've discussed or any future areas? And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, um, well, since I'm thinking of stuff, I guess I'll just talk and then we can ask for questions. But I think my, my two comments would be very brief. One, I'd be interested to see if there's a way to mitigate the, the energy use of this by off-site or near-site solar. If that's something that could be incorporated into whatever policy we come up with, having these by offsetting with renewable energy to power them. Something I wish I would have thought of for digital billboards a while back, but oh, well. And then the second thing I would say is that if we are going to get into the weeds on this, and there are two council members that are interested in working on this, I would strongly recommend we consider a short ad hoc committee to give additional feedback to those that may have more interest in, and feedback and expertise to give. I could start naming names, but I could also wait for volunteers. With that, what other, do we have any public comment on this item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment. However, I do see a hand that is raised in Zoom.
Okay, let's go ahead and take that first. I'll name the name when I get, well, it's our IT department.
Correct. I don't know. So I, I can go ahead and unmute.
Somebody in our IT department has an opinion on this?
They could be a resident.
Or, okay, they, they've just called IT department on their iPad that they got, and they just muted themselves?
Unmute. I just unmuted myself.
Okay, could you say your full name, please, and community residents before you speak?
Hi, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek.
Okay, go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Been there present before. I just wanted to kind of comment on the gateway signs there that we're proposing. I, I like the current city municipal code that talks about them being one, maximum of one per freeway exit, and that it has a sixty-foot allowed height limit. We already are dealing with height limits here and there. I like to kind of keep it the same, makes more sense. You also have a digital signage, freeway signage overlay municipal policy that allows sixty feet as well as a maximum height for conversion. So just kind of want to make sure that we continue to maintain a certain semblance of decorum here. Love that comment that you made, Mayor, about the solar. Possible to kind of control our electrical costs because again, we'd love to be a green city and keep things in check. And also about having that mitigation of the potential birds. Because I don't want birds dying there by the freeway. You see all those birds trying to nest all around town as it is. So I definitely appreciate you trying to mitigate that, curb that and keep that nice and check. So, but we'd really just love to keep it as is and not increase our height. The profile that we see going up fifty towards Folsom, you see those from pretty far away. You'll still see these from pretty far away as well. So, and again, I, I like the idea of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Terry.
Let's hope that our bill, that billboards and signages aren't killing birds. But I think we were talking about nesting in a mess, but yeah, go ahead.
I do have a speaker card.
You do? Go ahead.
Helen Wayland-Bushaw.
It's me again. I have an objection to these signs. We've had various communications over the last two years about signage. I find the height of that sign to be obnoxious. It's like having a Empire State Building out in the middle of no man land. I also consider the fact that at one meeting, we talked about the number of signs that could be up when some other company wanted to put signs up and it was nixed. So why are we putting this Empire State Building, Eiffel Tower out in the middle of no man land? It's distracting to the people. And once you get this sign in, every Tom, Dick and Harry is going to want one little, another exit. So you're adding more distraction to the driving force out there now that is always on their iPhones or their whatever. And they're going to be reading signs, you know, I, I, to me, it's, we need to stick with what we have. You had a limit to the number of signs that could be on the Highway fifty, if I remember correctly, within the last two years. And I just don't see any benefit. But if you go along with this, swallows, once they land there, they're federally protected. So you better come up with a good solution not to allow them there. And you're going to have to clean the signs, but I just think they're obnoxious. Thank you.
Thank you. I would only clarify, I, I believe our only policy around signage and Highway fifty in the cor, in that corridor deals with digital billboards, if I'm correct. Then that's a self-imposed limit that at some point somebody, well, before I ever worked here. Because I think it was one, and then we changed it to two at some point.
Right, there's two types of signs along the, the freeway corridor, the gateway ones or the digital billboards.
Uh, other questions or Linda, go ahead.
Yeah. So Amanda, I just want to make sure that, that sign it, that you're talking about at Zimfendale is a staff proposal, not another retailer?
Yes, correct. That is a staff proposal.
Okay, thank you. And Donald, if it isn't patently obvious, yes, I volunteer to be on the committee.
There you go. That, that, that's what I was looking for. Linda, thank you very much.
I would, I would volunteer as well.
Thank you very much, because I was going to say if it's a committee of one, that's not technically a committee. There we go. We've got two. At this point, is there?
I have a couple of.
Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I, I think place making is really important for a sign in this sort of location. Maybe along the lines of what Linda was talking about, but I think that needs a little exploration and my willingness to serve on the committee. I think, you know, naming us Rancho Cordova in some key spots and maybe doing that with art. This is where Linda and I will probably disagree. Maybe doing that with the digital component of the sign in some way makes sense. I, I think sometimes the tiny little signs along the freeway are hard to read. Maybe the, you know, people who have their stuff up there feel good about it, but I'm not sure how effective it is when it's, you know, a panel with twenty little signlets on it or whatever, whatever you would talk about. So I think that deserves a little exploration. But if we could do this in a way that's attractive and sort of add something to Rancho Cordova, helps our businesses certainly, but also has some artistic merit on its own or some, some community messaging capacity. I think all those, all those considerations are important here.
I'm going to go real quick. Yeah, go ahead. So I'll just make mine brief as well. I'm glad the two senior most council members are stepping up to get into this. I'm hypersensitive to height of things right now and how it affects the community. So I'd want some community feedback of even the people that are across the way. So I don't want to put any lights in someone's backyard or make them feel uncomfortable or put something gaudy. That is awesome. Did you get that?
We did.
Okay, just make, sorry, she was trying to answer her phone. Sorry, Linda. She ain't the only one that's, their phone went off tonight, so let's not beat anybody up. I'm not beating anybody up. I didn't even say the name. So that's number one. Number two, I was under pressure and we weren't doing any more signs. So if we are doing signs, are we not going to make it electronic? I don't know, because Linda's more, better at place making and this kind of stuff, if that makes the most sense for that location. And if we did allow for something of this size, I want something for my community that can be on there. So, you know, the other members of the community, the nonprofits, the MAC. um, nonprofits, the MAC, another place for them to do marketing, some kind of cool thing that I could engage because I wanted to benefit. And I I do kind of understand the placemaking because we did a bunch of studies on that. But whatever we would do has to be unique to Rancho, so I don't want boring colors and stuff like that. I want it to stand out. I don't want to be just drive up and see the Plaudio sign that's basically big. It's got to be a piece of Rancho, because this would be the first giant mega sign I've seen ever in our city along the side. Sorry, that was mean, wasn't it? I apologize.
We don't have any at the moment. That's true.
No, I thought it was great.
Yeah, I I guess my my only feedback to what you just said, Garrett, that that you know, feedback for the committee to consider, um, is this is unique in the fact that we're talking about kind of retrofitting a sign and then promoting things that may be miles away from where that sign is. Traditionally, there's a sign and it's promoting things that are right off the highway.
Right.
Um, in this case, I guess I won't name names, but if I was to say the bigs bo- the big box retailer and the home improvement store on Sunrise, um, that are at least two miles, if not four to five miles away, are going to be on a sign at at Sunrise. And so figuring out how you not only put that logo up, but also maybe remind them that you don't pull off the highway at Sunrise and make a quick right and end up in the parking lot where this retailer is where the where the tile store used to be and realize you're five miles away from where you're actually looking for. Um, on the flip side, I would say the opportunity to promote those large retailers that drive an enormous amount of of tax revenue into the city, I think is a good thing. Um, and then also the opportunity to promote things like the Barrel District and things, which we can all agree as much as we tried to claim a barrel district, some of them are 10 miles apart, right? So we have a distillery up in the northwest corner of the city and we've got a meadery down in the southeast and breweries and stuff in the southeast side of the city. Um, and God love our economic development people that they've able to come together and create, you know, uh, a cohesive brand around an idea that and call it a district when the only part of the district is that they're within the city, except for one that's across the street from the city, uh, that still claims this as Rancho, and we love them. Go Fort Rock. Uh, but it, you know, in general, I think there, I think there's some great opportunities here, but it it is a unique problem that the committee and I hope some other folks are going to help us think about is the fact that we're putting together a sign to promote things that may be miles away from that sign. Um, and I think that's a unique problem that um, is not shared by a lot of these monument signs across other parts of highways in in California that I'm familiar with. Um, I was just, I was just telling Cyrus that I remember coming back and I want to say it was near Turlock, but maybe it was before that on 99 and I saw one of these and it had 20 or 30 sites or like spots to put something on. And the only thing that was there was like the Flying J gas station, yet they had enough for what looks like 100 years of development because there's nothing else near it, yet they have all of these available signs for it. But it's all for developable open land that's right there next to the highway. So someday, all those things are going to be there. And we have this weird thing that we're retrofitting this into a community and saying we're going to promote things that are all over the city, which here nor there, um, I I I don't think that's a terrible idea. It's just, it's a unique problem to have is that literally people are getting off the highway and go, well, where's my big box retailer that I was looking for? Oh, it's nowhere near here. I mean, it's on the same street, but it's way further south. Um, other questions or comments for staff? Go ahead, Linda, please.
Yeah, Donald, you have a really, you have a really good point. Um, however, um, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, Rancho's not quite that big. Um, I think it's seven miles from end to end, but um, the other thing that's important to that that staff will recognize and and they will obviously bring up that when you do a sign in one location and there is nothing on that sign that is in that location, then it's called off-site signage. And so we would need to, um, we would need to figure out how to approve that off-site signage to do the big box retailer that's a couple of miles down the road.
Would we not do the sign for over on Corianna Plaza's side then, or that area?
I I mean, it it, you're you're looking at me. I mean, ultimately, it's a policy that needs to be adopted and decide where that's going to be.
Linda, when you're doing the, when you two are doing the two by two, would that mean that the sign that was gonna be for the movie theater and hopefully something that would bring stuff in, but now it's not, would you not put a sign there because this one's here? Because we don't, we don't daisy chain signs.
Well, that's why, that's why this is, that's why this is such a pivotal discussion.
Okay.
Because we were, we were, uh, it wasn't for um, Corianna or for the um, um, or for a potential movie theater. I think it was for um, of it might have been for Coles, but they requested. No, actually, you know, the first one that we got a request for was the um, um, the college, uh, uh, San Joaquin Valley College. And then uh, and then there was a request, oh, I know, David will remember, it was because um, in that same building that's got Mattress Firm and the dentist and whatnot, there was a um, nightclub that went in there for a very short period of time and they wanted to build a freeway-oriented sign on the south side of Olson, and we flat out turned them down. Uh, oh, it, this is, this was several years ago.
It wasn't, it wasn't the casino?
No, and they were there, they were there a very short period of time. They turned out to be less than honorable, an honorable business in the community. And um, and that didn't last very long. But um, but yeah, this is a pivotal discussion for Rancho Cordova. Garrett, we've been fighting community freeway signs, not community freeway signs, but freeway signs in general in this community since the late 70s, because we did not want to look like all of those warehouses up on um, Highway 80 and Business 80 in North Highlands. Everybody decided that the freeway in Rancho Cordova, Highway 50, now that we had one, should look better than what they've got in North Highlands. And not to trash North Highlands, but that's that was the mood of the community at the time. And Dan Scoglan, bless his heart, um, Dan and I just really felt that community, that that commitment. So at this point in time, that's why I asked the question about Zimphendale. There's um, huge groves of trees in that area. Um, and and what we we don't want, we don't want somebody to get up, we don't want an applicant, potential applicant or a sign company to get out there and um, and fly a sheet of four by eight uh, plywood up there above the trees in order to show that this sign needs to be 100 feet tall instead of 60 feet tall. You know, um, I'm sorry, I've worked for fast feeders who tried to do that up on Highway 65, and that is not a good conversation to have in your community. So I I I appreciate um, Donald wanting to do a community, a committee, and I think David and I will do a good job of balancing the needs of the business community with the needs of um, retaining our sense of civic improvement here in Rancho Cordova.
Mayor Terry, may I add a little bit? So I I think there is language already in the code that will help um, with the parameters of what can be on that sign. So the intent of these signs is to promote businesses, activities, events and places of the community for the greater bene- public benefit. So I do believe the language provides that flexibility to have various users or as Councilmember Gatewood was saying, um, opportunity for community event type advertising, which we have talked to the council about before previously. Um, so I think it's there and I think this is something, um, it's a great topic for the ad hoc committee to take a look at and start figuring out what those parameters are so that we can establish that through a resolution.
Yep. Other questions and comments for staff? So this is a receiving file and I think we've given you enough direction. Um, I don't, I don't think we need to hold a vote to establish an ad hoc committee, right? Okay, that's what I thought. Um, so with that, I think we're good. Staff, you have what you need?
I believe we have what we need.
Can I make, can I make a comment or?
Um, that's not.
Or is that time passed?
Yeah, that's probably passed. Thank you. Um, I would highly encourage you to stay in tune with uh, whatever committee meetings might come up. And I'm sure Darcy will help you coordinate that. Um, with that, we'll move on to item 13, uh, council requests for future agenda items. Anybody got new ideas? I can tell you, the last time I talked to our city manager about our calendaring, um, we've got a lot of cool ideas to talk about. It's trying to get us all in the same room to have a meeting. That's the problem. So I wouldn't suggest adding a lot more new ideas.
I have one request.
Go ahead.
Um, maybe superfluous and and Cyrus may be able to deal with this. It's sort of reflexive on Dennis Lamonti and his role in this community. There's some sort of a model out there that would be a great way to interact with our youth sports organizations that probably requires something closer to what Folsom operates with as opposed to what we operate with. They have a, like a staff for their um, Folsom Athletic Association, ironically, which is based on what we were in the 1980s here in Rancho Cordova, but we don't have that equivalent for RCA or that support role for our youth sports organizations. And so times like this, you're at great risk. And Mr. Mayor, I think you said something earlier about don't know how we fill these gaps and regain those skills. Um, it could be done through that sort of a mechanism, the way they do it in Folsom. So we might want to have a discussion here about how we could, uh, how we could protect, perhaps get something good out of this crisis and uh, and find a better way to sort of manage and assist these youth sports entities.
Yeah, uh, i- if we're looking for some tips on that too, I would only point out that um, at least over the past month, the City of Sacramento has been trying to recruit a director of youth programs. Um, so we may reach out to them as far as their search and how that's been working because maybe it's been posted for six weeks now that I've, I don't know, I've I've written a couple of recommendations and I know I'm a reference for a couple of candidates, but the 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 efforts are ongoing. Yeah, go ahead, Cyrus.
Yeah, um, council, we are planning a um, a work session. This is to officially kick off the pre-visioning discussions and the pre-budgeting meetings later this month on August 23rd. That would be a good topic for that day because it is a discussion about uh, budget. It's a discussion about some of the expenditures related to Measure H and Measure R. So I I would recommend and I would suggest that we cover that topic on that day.
Yeah, well, and if if for no other reason than we're about to have our first youth facility that we're going to operate, and at some point, you're probably going to need to line up the staffing directly for administering that.
Yeah.
And while we've talked about that, that's going to be nonprofit administrators doing a lot of that work, there's probably going to be a coordinator that's, I don't know, I'm looking at our deputy city manager and assuming they're going to report to him, but that's just my guess. Um, I'm sure you'll make that decision. Um, okay, uh, any other items for future agenda items?
Recording in progress.
Hearing none, we'll move on to adjourn and tonight we'll be journeying in the memory of Zella Beckman, uh, Mary Arm, Mary Armstrong, George Wajel, Bobby Lundgren and Dennis Lamontia.
You're here.
We're, and keep in mind, we're adjourning to closed session. We do have a closed session, so David, Linda, stick around, please. Um, and we'll, we'll be back out to report briefly. For those of you in the room that are going to be in closed session, we're going to move into the community boardroom so that we can just dial in and be done with this. We're not walking all the way back up to the Titan Room. And if you in the community boardroom, we're going to need the room for about 10 minutes.